Hello, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order and thank you all for coming. Can we start with a roll call first? Deputy Clerk?
Ellis?
Here.
Yakin?
Here.
Hodgkin?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Carachini?
Here.
Fredo?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Orr?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I also want to say if I've been talking or any of us are talking and you can't hear us, you don't have to yell or anything, just raise your hand so that we can see that you guys can't hear and we can talk louder. It just helps us all. Okay, if you'd like to stand for the pleasure of the Legion. Oh, I'll land that. Okay, I also want to say if I've been talking or any of us are talking and you can't hear us, you don't have to yell or anything, just raise your hand so that we can see that you guys can't hear and we can talk louder. It just helps us all. Okay, if you'd like to stand for the pleasure of the Legion. Oh, I'll land that. Thank you. I just wanted to relay a little story to take two minutes. About 22 years ago, I had a really good friend that ran an art center in California, and we had met this wonderful artist and convinced him to show his art in our gallery. And while he was showing his art in the gallery, he went to New York to visit some friends, and they were in the tower number two. They just had breakfast at the top, and they were just getting off the elevator in the middle of the building. And when that building was struck by a plane and almost knocked them on their feet, they needed that life. But he passed away within months afterwards because of the problems with his lung. So I know that daddy bent stuck in all of our heads. We all remember exactly where we were, what we were doing when that happened. And so if you don't mind, could we all stand and just give a minute of silence for the people who lost? Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to Council President for the approval of the agenda.
I approve the next agenda.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Dean Matten, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed? If passes? So now we're going to do a presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Clerk so that she can kind of tell the folks that are around here that what we're doing. This is involving, I think, a new councilperson.
We have five candidates tonight to fill our vacant Ward Five position. They're going to be called up individually in order that we receive their applications. They have an opportunity to address the council for up to five minutes each, and then we'll ask them to take their seat up here. Once they're all finished, you guys as a council and mayor will have an opportunity to address them with any questions you have. Please make the questions addressed to each of them. They'll each have an opportunity to answer your question if they wish. And then you'll have the option of going to executive session, should you wish, to discuss. And then you'll come back and make your vote in the open public meeting. If there's an evident majority winner in our vote, we will have one vote tonight. The candidate will be declared into the office. If there is not an evident majority, we'll take the second vote with the top two candidates that had the highest votes. So we'll start tonight with our first address with Elizabeth.
Mayor, council members.
If you wish.
I'm Elizabeth Shave. I usually go white bunny, however. So as a longtime resident of Aberdeen, I care about the city and the people that live and work here. I would like to serve the people of Aberdeen as a city council member and to help them move the city forward now that the pandemic and all its laws and regulations are behind us. I believe that the city's focus should be on the safety needs of citizens first. That would include updating our new stations for both police and fire, maintaining a clean and affordable water supply, maintaining adequate garbage services, and unbroken and clean city streets and sidewalks, and of course, the city hall that they're working on all day years. And the mostly retired are in. I have a very flexible schedule. This would allow me to attend council meetings, to be present for committee meetings, as a representative of the city, as a liaison at various organizations, and to the community. With a background in healthcare and teaching, I have a strong ability for critical thinking, active listening, and collaboration. These skills will enable me to work well with council members and with citizens of this community. I'd be honored to represent the city of Aberdeen and work fighting as a city council member, and I thank you for my consideration for this position. If I see that cheering up?
Yes. So next, we will have Maya. Maya joining us tonight remotely. Maya, if you are on. She just left. She must have tried. Maya, can you hear us?
Is it working now? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Maya.
Okay. Hold up my speech. All right. Hey, serving on city council will give the people of my ward someone a lot more relatable to their own voice. I already have a strong outreach in our city, and I think it would be extremely reassuring to the citizens to see someone like them having a say in what affects them. I have been into advocacy and outreach for almost 20 years of my life. Homelessness, domestic violence, sexual abuse, child abuse, mental health, youth homelessness, resource navigation, and everything in between. I am a very boots-on-the-ground type of person because no one in a vulnerable state wants to take anybody seriously that doesn't know what their situation feels like. As a stay-at-home mother whose business is based out of my home, I have plenty of time to continue to make these connections and remain heavily involved. The two biggest concerns that I want to address when it comes to the city of Aberdeen are public safety and how money is being spent. I feel like addressing the finances will help us pinpoint where we can be less frivolous and more pinpointed on how to keep all of our citizens feel safer. A vast majority of people living here feel like the cost of living is dramatic in comparison to its level of safety. City council members here have a very imperative role that should be never taken lightly or for granted. They are the only voice for the people who are begging to be heard. They get to listen to all of those voices and determine what is best. They get to decide whether those voices are strong enough for them to vote for or against. At the end of the day, lives are in the city council's hands, and it is their job to do what is right for everyone. It is their job to always keep on learning and to never let their opinions, based solely off of their life situations, dictate how things go. It is clear that there is a heavy divide between the council members, and there needs to be a bigger number of heavier voices. If everyone always agrees, then there is no growth. I am not scared to do the dirty work, say the unpopular opinion, or challenge anyone's position if I feel it is not what is best for everyone. I have been the homeless kid, the homeless teen, and the homeless young adult. I have been the one starting over from nothing over and over and over again. I have been the single mom who can't afford the extra $10 to $16 on a bill. I am the mom whose children's lives are dramatically impacted by decisions made in this room. I am the homeowner, the local shopper, the small business owner, the walker of the sidewalks, and I am the person who falls through the cracks due to all of these other reasons. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Maya. Next, we'll go with Alan. Good evening. I'm over now, who am? I want to try to have been on the council before. I just got a medical driver didn't have time to prepare a particular thing, but I want to, something that has really come up lately that struck me was sort of this division within not only the people of the city, but in the council itself, kind of based on personal political agendas. And we don't have that luxury here. This area is sliding into poverty and not necessarily despair yet, but we have one political agenda, and that's the city of Aberdeen and making it a better place to be for everybody. It's, having gone all over the Northwest and other parts of the world, Aberdeen, Washington is a gold mine that doesn't realize it anymore. It used to be a very prosperous, bustling place, but the reason for that doesn't exist like it did anymore. We have now a clean slate, and the city council, at the city council level of government, we have about the least power of anybody. But we can use that to build a vibrant 21st century city based on a sustainable industry, and you can go after tourist dollars, which are low-hanging fruit. Recently, I was looking through the city of Canby, Oregon, which is about the size of Opelika. That island's about the size of Aberdeen, roughly. They've got a bustling downtown, and business is thriving there. There's a lot of reasons for it, but they have a lot of support from their city council and support from the local people. And we can all work together and do what we can. And in the aggregate, just like the money ball, if we can put our pieces together, we can come up with a really pretty great place to go and spend time. This is, this is a destination city, believe it or not. I went to a meeting a couple of years ago up in Elma, and there were people there from what used to be the Eddie Bauer and people from Patagonia, and not from here, but these tourist-oriented industries. And this was a place where people were coming. And we had, we had the ocean, the beaches, we got the largest temperate rainforest in the world, we've got hiking trails, we've got fishing, we've got some of the most historically significant parts of the state are right here in Aberdeen, and that's, that's a marketable thing. And I would like to see, I would like to see the city council and the county that's going to take a multi-partisan participation, work towards this commercialization of this area. It's starting to, it's starting to build with music. I can tell you that the music thing is really big around the world. But we're going to have to, we're going to have to work together, and I can work with pretty much anybody. No, I, you know, so I'd like to be able to do that for the city. I spent 15 years or so in, in my jobs solving problems. That's kind of what we did. And so anyway, I would like to thank you for your consideration to return me to the city council for the rest of the term. Thank you.
Alan. You have a seat up here. There you are in the middle.
You can boot one out if you have more space. Next is Joshua.
I'm an entrepreneur and I would like, I would like to serve on the same council again because I think my perspective will help improve our city. I've had an investment and interest in learning how we can govern ourselves and how we can improve our society since I was young. I've lived here for more than three decades, and I have a daughter who lives here as well as families surrounding here. So I have, I want to improve this area. During my time at college, I tried to get a classical educational that focused on sociology, which is groups, their behaviors, and psychology. And I also read a lot of literature there. My experience, talents, and skills, that's the, I served one elected term as this role. I was the vice chair of the Public Works Committee for two of those years. I learned the leverage rules in the border, and I wanted to process it. I've done over 300 camps in our local water shed. Lots of good people have helped over the decade plus of those groups. And moved over 70 tons of garbage and almost a ton recycling, roughly 14,000 recycled containers, which more than half of us, and about 1,500 reserves. It's clean enough, so it's all made that we work together, we can have a clean Aberdeen. I also maintain a community garden in our local town community in town. They're on the move to the market for the garden, but that unrealistic choice would have to be terminated. I volunteer with the market and even worked as a janitor at the Cold Weather Shelter they ran. I think, well, at the market for local farmers, it benefits our community, helping that situation improve. Being a janitor at the Cold Weather Shelter taught me that any shelter situation needs to be done correctly, and that's a lot of respect. I am also a tiny small business owner. I grow plants and produce for the Sunday market, also make deliveries and spend my time. The community issues that I would like to focus on are the cleanliness of our city by the improving volunteer situation. I have the sanitation downtown, which I think we should have maybe reportedly do during town. We need to reduce drug use, food prices and inflation, housing costs and availability, emergency shelter, and, and through the blood launch at Lynn Curtis. My perception of the role of a city council member is a legislator with a quasi-judicial role. We listen to staff, community members, experts who make decisions and change ordinance to make the threat into trouble in the city. Things I get to interview are, isn't too much, actually. Market's about to end for the year, and my business capital becomes very flexible after that. I am definitely finishing my degree up here during the winter. And well, I did plan on center water shed and community garden, and I'm trying to incorporate that and refine an umbrella arrangement for them, and I also have the water, max of social life, and thank you. How do I work with everybody here? Well, I'm a good, active listener. I like to bring up good points, and I like using notebooks, direct down to important parts.
Thank you, Joshua and Michelle.
Good evening, council. I am going, applying for the Ward Five position. One, I do live in the thick of what is going on down in Ward Five. In fact, today I did actually save somebody's life. We had an OD down there. It took probably about five minutes before anybody got there, nine rounds of Narcan, chest compressions. I, it's kind of a hit and miss as to what happens down there day by day. You know, I know how to work with kids and people at all different areas in life. I've kind of been through being close to homeless real recently to now being able to live without the support of somebody else, working hard to help the people down in my area find ways to get food if they need it. I've helped people with hotels lately, just trying to help them get off the streets, which is one huge aspect of our ward. It needs some help, obviously. And then finding a way to be able to cut on some costs would be great, even if it means us having to freeze some of our hiring here in the city. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, council, if you'd like to ask some questions, we can open that up now to the floor. We'll start, I'll call you guys out when it's your turn to answer. And if anyone has any questions, feel free. Just push the red button.
Thank you. I wanted to start out by thanking each of the applicants for this open position. It was just great looking through your, your materials to see how you would bring some really needed and helpful experience and, and skills. Unfortunately, there is only one position for us to fill. As I looked through the packets, I was looking for what, what were your top three issues that you would like to work on as a council member? And, and so I'm curious to hear if you could, in the interest of time, just pick one of those and talk a bit about how, how you would represent your constituents in working with the rest of your council members to make progress on that.
Bonnie, we'll start with you.
Three high priorities.
Could you make sure the mic might turn on too?
Three highest priorities. Safety with new firing police stations, and eighteen officers was firing a police. And the maintenance of current maintenance of current city building, the city hall and fire station and extension in the city that need to be ready to maintain, so we don't have to catch up and some people. And then all the responsibilities for anything else that then will be, how would I look as my constituents? I honestly, I'm not sure of that. I'm sorry. How I do that? I suppose I would need to go and talk to them, personally, if I'm in there, if I read that line. And then my, my change, if that would be case, I would need to go and talk to my neighbors and help the city businesses and what they thought about them. Thank you.
Maya, are you still with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you hear the question?
I, I missed the second question. I heard the first one.
So your top priorities and which one of them would you, would be your pri, your number one? Is that right, Liz? And how would you work with your constituents to solve that?
Okay, yeah, my top three priorities are the finances, the public safety, and connecting people with resources, all sorts of resources, and having more tailored resources. And I am already, I have a small business that I call Cravens Collective, and I use that as a platform when I sell at the Sunday market, and I have an online Facebook group for it where I connect with as many people as possible, and I hand out flyers at the Sunday market and tell them, you know, about what I try to do because there are some very specific resources that, that are offered, but there's not ones that are for very interesting situations. Like if you have a mortgage, there's very extreme minimal help. And there are a lot of people that are willing to volunteer their time, and that's what I focus a lot of my time on doing, is connecting the people that are willing to volunteer their time with the people that need that time volunteered to them. Sometimes it's as simple as having their dog walked on a day that they're depressed. And I, I just will continue to do that. I have two Facebook groups. I meet with people on Sundays. I have people that contact me multiple times a day that are seeking assistance, and I make sure that they get connected with where they need to go.
Thank you. Alan? There we go. I'm wondering what would be my top three? I, I don't really have a top, but they're all number one priority so we can do more than one thing at a time. My focus probably would be towards economic development and bringing more income into the city through, through that. And would you find that, that cities or municipalities develop economically, people do better, people, more people have jobs, there's money floating around because they're getting paid to do work, and crime goes down, and the city improves, and we can, we can put Aberdeen back on the map as a place to go for the 21st century. It will, but it's not going to be like it was 100 years ago. That's gone now. But I would, I would probably push my talents towards working in that direction. There's more money out there, grant money out there than there has ever been, but it's hard to get to. I know a lot of people who can help go after it. And, but we need, we need some of that money for a new fire station. We need that money for, well, two fire stations. We'll need that money for a new police station. And the public safety aspect of it melds into that as well. And so I, I, I really want to, to emphasize that stopping the slide into, I hate to keep using, overusing the term, but stopping the slide into poverty, that's what we have to do because that's affecting everybody. And, and when we make it, as they say now, I think it was Paul Wellstone, that coined phrase, when we all do better, we all do better. And so this, this area can capitalize on, on what it has. And it's going to take a lot of work. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be cheap, and it's not going to be fast, but it's not going to happen if we don't do it. So there you are. Thank you. Joshua?
All right. My three community issues were improving the blood launch at Lynn Curtis intersection, improved sanitation in town by having a port and loop, and including improving your general cleanliness of our town by improving the cleanup. It's the fresh smell that are available by the city and to help facilitate people getting to do, it's every their personal habit, be able to clean up the area and see that somebody can change it. If we all work together, we could have clean town. We need to have the ability to do so.
Thank you. Michelle?
My top one actually was our public safety. I do think it's important for all of our citizens to be safe after what I went through today and the reputation of what's happening from a social media post by a high school student. Keeping all our citizens is very important to me. To do that, I would keep great communication with my constituents, make sure there isn't anything that somebody might need, or drive around and make sure there isn't an area in town that maybe isn't getting the help that they need for the public safety.
Thank you. Any other council questions?
There've been a lot of constituents and the city residents who focused on and said that the city needs to do more for tourism and economic development. Can you?
Can you state one idea or manner or method that you think that the city itself can do to help improve economic development or tourism for the city?
Good, all the candidates, we'll try to keep our answers to one minute just for lack of time tonight. And Maya, we'll start with you on this one.
Yeah, I think some very consistent implementation of laws will really help help make the visualness of the city be extremely more appealing so that more people will want to come in and spend their money and people will want to reside here. We already have an issue with our home values not equating to what the city is having to offer. So if we're able to get that leveled out by making sure that the streets are cleaned, people are cleaned, and we are prioritizing people's needs, then the rest will fall right in line.
Thank you. Alan?
I would, you're asking what specifically I would do? What do you think the city can do? What the city can do is start with what it's got and capitalize on it. The public art is a big one. Look what happened over, not to pick on you mayor, but look what happened over by the illegals building, those obelisks one of. And I've talked to people from out of the area that came down to see the Nirvana and stuff and all that. But they were impressed with this splash of color and the veering towards the aesthetic. And I agree with Joshua that we tried to get Portland moves here, but the money fell through, we couldn't get enough money to do it. That would make it more friendly for not just local people, for tourists as well. And I would also, there's a whole list of things that I had laid out on paper I had written on economic development, you don't have time for any of that, but maybe I can send it in to someone. But that's one thing that's easy to do, is clean up and beautify.
Thank you. Joshua?
I think we're in the entrepreneurial situation that we can really make an profitable city here. We have people that come out of town just to visit our stores. And yeah, decided to improve planning this downtown. I think putting in an actual boat launch, a Bingham Curtis boat launch there will improve how many fit or income to this area and that will increase tourism.
Thank you. Michelle?
I honestly think we could advertise some of the stuff we already have, like our art center, the Nirvana Music Center, even the boat launch music that we have downtown. And just a little more color added to some of our buildings and I think people will come back through here.
Thank you. Bunny?
I don't know if I have anything else to add. I think a lot of those ideas are things that I would agree with. We used to have art walk downtown every year with artists in the stores and things like that. I think being that, I believe, the same kind of thing. I believe that the city has an economic development council in Grace Harbor. They said the Grace Harbor Council. And we advertise in Coastal Magazine. I think all of those are really good ideas as far as bringing businesses in. I think that something has to be done down with some of the empty buildings downtown so there's room for businesses. I don't know something can be improved, some of them are just empties. I think we can find who owns them, I mean, I'm sure we can know who's owning them, but you know, see if they can improve them and they'll sell them if they I don't know if they can be fined for keeping them in a big mess. I don't know, but I think that that would have to be improving the debt books on downtown with some of the buildings cleaned up or taken down is essential.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
I have a question. So we're currently operating on a deficit, which means we're spending more than we're bringing in. So I would like to know what you would think, because you know, you guys are all of the age where you've had to probably cut expenses in order to meet your monthly bills. So what are areas where maybe we're overspending, where you think that we might need to make cuts? And what's an area that you think might generate more income into Aberdeen? We have had a lot of businesses closed and businesses that pay taxes. And we have a lot of businesses here that are 501(c)(3)'s and I don't think that they pay taxes. So that is making it, it's getting us upside down. So the two things, one, you know, what are areas where we might be overspending, where we can make a cut, and two, what's an area where we could generate more income?
Alan, we'll start with you.
You're right, 501(c)(3)'s the largest employer in the city of Aberdeen, it's hospital system, the second largest employer in Vegas, CA. There's not a lot of tax revenue there. Being in business, it's tough and I would, in a town like this, especially a tourist town, restaurants are a big deal. We could use another 10 or so, but we just lost one Friday. And it's really hard. And where is the city overspending? I can't really address that without looking at the numbers. I used to talk at length with Captain Scholmer and we go to lunch and stuff and she won't choose financial or whatever. I don't really have enough information on the dollars, your balance sheet and everything. If you're operating in a deficit, of course, you're going to have to fix that by the end of the year. But so I can't really intelligently go into that and say that you just cut here, add here. So I will try.
Thank you. Joshua?
Let's see. I'm not sure where season cuts down. Things that are sitting could be made money is to the new west in our water, in our forestry land. We do have long forest lands that we make profits off of and we put a small portion of those funds into buying more of those land to be able to take advantage of all of these lands and make our city money.
Thank you. Michelle?
One area I know after going to the workshop last week that we could use to make some money is cutting down some of the forestry behind Lake Aberdeen. There's quite a bit of money right there just in the trees. Overspending, I mean, I think we're probably freezing the hiring would help because I think we're buying too many people right now for our deficit.
Bunny?
I don't know where the overspending would be without looking at a budget. Not something I'm looking at, but just like with my own budget, I have to take care of my rent and my utilities first, my vehicles. And with what money left, if I have money left, there's other things for vacations, arcades in the yard, things like that. I don't know what is excess. Sometimes I think, well, why do we have to maintain these parks? But that brings tourism, that brings people, the parks looking nice is something that promotes our city. So I've thought of that before, but I don't think that's a viable answer. I don't know where to get that. I think that this is all those variables now in maintaining what we're doing.
Maya?
For the overspending, I think that there needs to be some reevaluation on what's going to become priority for what's considered beautifying the city versus what is necessary, like Bunny was just saying, because we do need to make the parks beautiful, because we still need to bring those people in. But there are some things that are probably just a little excessive that would suck to be put on the back burner. But until, you know, the security exists, we need to put a little bit of that prettiness aside. Probably reevaluate some people's salaries that are probably taking out of the budget. And see if there's any availability for volunteer positions versus actual paid positions. And then when it comes to how to bring in more, I think that these small businesses are the real key to how to make Aberdeen generate more money. Because it is, as a small business owner, it is actually really hard to obtain a small business and maintain a small business, especially with how the taxes are broken down and everything. I'm really good with numbers, I've been to school for accounting and it still was really confusing for me and I had to get some assistance. And I think that there needs to be more encouragement for people to be into doing a small business, especially the Sunday market. It's been pretty sparse and it is such a great thing that can bring in so many people. I used to live in Olympia where they also have a Sunday market. And well, it's actually like a weekend market now. And that thing is ginormous and it's like an attraction. And I feel like being here, we could have something like that and it would be an attraction where people on their way to ocean shores want something. People leaving ocean shores want something and that's money spent here. And there should be some incentives for people to have small businesses. There should be things put out, just come start a business and make money in our city so that we can keep putting back into you. Thank you.
Yep, we have time for one last quick question, if someone has one that's quick with a short answer.
Yeah. I just had a quick answer question. So if there's a vote of the council that you don't agree with, if you're elected as the council person, how would you handle that as far as, would you put all your cards in and go with the direction of the council? Or would you go on social media and cause as much havoc as you can, try and burn people? I mean, so what would you do as a council person? If the council voted to go in a direction that you didn't like, what would you do?
Social media council? I do, but I just use it to stop my family, basically. I don't post on it. And if it was the majority decision, then as part of the council, you would go along with it and it would help support the city. I would.
Alan? A vote of the council is a vote of the council, that's the way it turns out. I'll have to confess that my biblical policy, one, I was up late two nights ago. I was actually reading Robert's Rules of Order. And I have read through, was comparing it through the Congressional Order. And that didn't put me to sleep, but still, there's a process by which this happens. And sometimes in a democratic republic, that's what happens. That sometimes you can be passionate about something and you can be right, but you don't win the vote. And there's 11 more people and a mayor here for each of us. And there's collective wisdom we can draw on. And if something doesn't work, then we'll take a look at it and fix it or abandon it and do something else. But if the vote of the council was one way, that's the vote of the council.
Go back to Maya.
So if it's something that I am just that absolutely passionate about and it doesn't go my way, there are a million other resources, I'm sure that I could go out there and try to find a way to make it work in a legal way for the people that are asking for it. Not saying that there's a way around the council. It's if the council's not going to provide the people with something that they are absolutely needing, then it will be my responsibility as their advocate to go out there and make them happy and make them feel like they are absolutely still being heard. So it's not an issue to take up fully with the council in that, in a mean way. It's a way, it's a thing to try to remedy in the way that it properly needs to be remedied for the people.
Thank you. Joshua?
Yeah, it's the council, you make good decisions and you save those those stuff where you want to, bringing up your points. And also, the majority of other people have a different perspective. You have to stay with that and with that, it's part of the venue of the council.
Thank you. Michelle?
If the vote didn't go where I wanted, I wouldn't be going out on social media and blasting it or anything. I literally would keep to myself as to what I'm thinking if I'm upset about it. And if what we decide as a council doesn't work, I find, help find another solution.
Thank you.
I motion that we move into our executive session for up to 20 minutes in accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 to evaluate the qualifications of candidate for appointment to elective office. A second.
I'll be opposed. Good night, Karen. 6:35. Six seven thirty five.
Oh yeah.
I've had to. It sound more. I called the number that you.
Mr. Mayor, will we vote to fill the position, the nation's position on the city council?
Seven minutes.
All in favor?
This will be a roll call vote. As I call your name, please state the last name of the candidate you are voting for. Ellis.
Francie.
Gaken.
What's your last name?
Nippers.
Nippers. Nippers.
Ochkin.
Nippers.
Lawrence.
Never.
Mackey.
Richwan.
Orange.
Pepper.
Carachini.
Francie.
Fredo.
Branty.
Seedorf.
Branty.
War.
Taylor.
Nippers.
We have been five to five to one, so we will re-vote a second time. Your options now are Francie or Nippers. Ellis.
Francie.
Gaken.
Amber.
Ochkin.
Nippers.
Lawrence.
Never.
Mackey.
Francie.
Orson.
Pepper.
Carachini.
Francie.
Fredo.
Branty.
Seedorf.
Branty.
Swore.
Francie.
Taylor.
Nippers.
Francie wins six to five.
Congratulations. She gets sworn in at the next meeting?
Um, so Josh will have the opportunity to be sworn in prior to the next meeting if he wishes by our county auditor, Joe McLean. If he wanted to be at the public meeting, I will do it at our next meeting. So I'll contact you, Josh, and you can let me know.
Okay. So now we're going to go into public comments, and this is our only public comment, so please limit it to three minutes. And then about the fluoride issue, we're going to be talking about that later, so you'll have an opportunity to speak to that later. Okay, thanks. Please name your go and state your name and your board.
My name is Victoria Rivera. I'm the library manager for the Aberdeen Timberland Library. And I just wanted to promote an upcoming program for the community. Um, Bearwood, uh, the programmer used a lot of puns in the title of this program. Um, it is positively perfect reading. P A W S I T I B E L Y and then per. Um, so yes, it is all about cats. Uh, so join us, um, on Thursday, October 3rd from 3:30 to 5:30. Uh, this is a program for children ages eight and older. And they can practice their reading skills with while cuddling with adorable cats and kittens from Haws of Grace Harbor. Uh, this is a win-win program for everyone. Children gain confidence in their, uh, reading skills while fostering empathy for animals. And the animals receive much-needed socialization. Um, it is by registration and there are four spots remaining. Um, but if it fills up, go ahead and put yourself down to the waitlist because we will call on the morning of and we will verify, uh, who's coming in. And if they're not, then we can move up those people on the waitlist. So again, uh, positively perfect reading. Um, Thursday, October 3rd, they really should give me an easier thing to say. Uh, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Any else? Okay.
I'm Dr. Bill Osmondson. I'm a dentist. I have a master's in public health. And, um.
Is this the floor? And we're going to talk about that later, so. Can you talk now?
Respectfully.
Yes.
The Florida discussion has been moved to the 25th. So we're planning a presentation on that today.
Okay, so.
No. It's just adding the date.
When you.
No, we have a public hearing tonight on fluoride. There's two.
Yeah.
So we will be discussing fluoride later in our meeting. There's a.
To read the public.
Public hearing.
Hour later.
Later, please. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there anybody else for public comments? All right, so we'll turn over to the council president.
I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the August 28 meeting, accounts payable, payroll, and the homeless support. Second.
Agenda is second during the session, which could mayor, yes. Um, I'd like to ask for two corrections to be made in the minutes. Uh, the first correction, both of these are the same exact word. The first one is under the paragraph approval by the agenda, fourth line down, the word cities, C I P I E S. And down at the bottom of the page under special committee items on the first line about the middle also cities. Both of those should be C I P Y apostrophe S. Does that say cities RFP? So cause that's it. Thank you. A grammar error. Do we vote on those or are you a grandma?
No, that's.
Has it ended?
It's not even in a magnet.
All right. All in favor? Pause. That seems best. Thank you. Okay. And so now we have a presentation from county about our fluoride.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. My name is Mike Vickel. I'm director of public health for Grace Harbor County. I want to thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes of your time to talk about this. I just have a new rest statement, not your presentation. Um, first, I want to give you a brief description of what public health is and does. Public health, it can be distilled down to three words to describe what we do in in partnership with our folks in the community. Prevention, promotion, and protection. Our purpose in this meeting, we will focus on prevention. Dictionary definition of word prevention is the action of stopping something from happening or arising. With that definition in mind, public health prevention strategies aim to prevent diseases or injuries before they occur. Examples include vaccination programs, education programs, and community fluoridation. Community fluoridation primarily aims to prevent dental caries, also known as tooth decay or cavities, which is a major public health issue. By adding fluoride to public water supplies at recommended levels, with careful monitoring by the public water supply, communities can significantly reduce the prevalence of cavities. The most critical piece of this information work is making sure that those who cannot afford dental health services are receiving a basic level of prevention that reduces the probability of tooth decay in that sector of the community. Community water fluoridation also provides a basic community benefit, especially for individuals that may not have access to dental health care or preventative services. Fluoridation helps level the plate, ensuring that all the community members, regardless of your social status, have protection against tooth decay. It reduces the prevalence of dental caries, which, okay, fluoridation reduces oral health disparities among different population groups, including those with lower incomes or a lack of access to dental care. If you've ever suffered from a tooth cab, from a cavity or the dental problems, you know just how awful the pain is. It can be developed tooth decay, cavities, and other oral issues can only cause pain, but it can also cause difficulty concentrating and along the way tooth loss. Losing teeth often drives the need for costly procedures. Using the health equity lens, fluoridation was a proven, safe, and effective strategy, lowering the risk cavities for children, especially those who happen to be in a lower social status in the community. If you consider following statistics, removing fluoride from the water supply will exacerbate an already serious dental health problem in our community. Data from 2022, that long ago, found that 71.5% of kids under two in Grace Harbor County are enrolled in Medicaid and are not receiving dental care, 71.45%. Also in 2022, data shows that 50.9% of children under six who live in Grace Harbor County and are old in Medicaid are also not receiving dental care. Overall, in 2022, only 31.4% of all children enrolled in Apple Health received one or more dental treatments. That means 69% did none. I've heard that data set from 2015 to 2016 found that 21% of preschoolers were living with untreated dental caries in Grace Harbor County. I understand this is not city or Aberdeen specific data, but these data sets can be extrapolated. And some of the percentages of kids who are enrolled in Medicaid and not receiving dental health care services would likely be found in the city's population. I'm not here to debate science of fluoride. Seventy plus years of rigorous studies completed by respected organizations, things like community fluoridation is an effective method for preventing tooth decay in cavities within the lifetime of a person, particularly during childhood. The Centers of Disease Control Prevention, American Dental Association, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics support community fluoridation as an effective measure to prevent dental decay. Concerns about adverse health effects from community fluoridation at recommended levels are not supported by current scientific interventions. From an economic standpoint, every dollar invested in reducing the amount and expense of dental treatments, reducing time loss, and order work for adults, fluoridation proves an estimated average return of $20. That's $1 invested with a $20 return. As a representative of the Oregon of the Grace Harbor County Board of Health, I want to let you know that the Board of Health, along with the overwhelming majority of the world's healthcare organizations and leaders within the scientific and medical community, firmly supports the practice of community water fluoridation. A letter with this affirmation was sent to mayor or on July 23, 2024. By late, the Grace Harbor County Board of Health encourages community water systems to fluoridate your water at concentrations recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention as an economical, safe, and effective means to control the majority, the major public health problem of cancer carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. And if anybody have any questions from, I'm sorry, Mike, are they all. See anybody have any question for Mike? I'm sorry, Dallas.
I was just.
Not so fast.
Sorry.
Um, thank you for being here and thank you for your patience. As, as I read through scientific stuff on both sides, um, it's, it's not a easy haul, except when you look at the, um, organizations that you cite that'll stand behind the use of fluoride. But for communities that either don't currently fluoridate their waters or if we decide to remove fluoride from our water, um, in, in terms of the efficacy of getting fluoride onto the tooth enamel, um, is brushing with a fluoride toothpaste a good next, next step?
So I'm a public health director and I'm not a medical professional. So I will not make phone, I won't make calls about whether or not those things are affected because that's not my area of expertise. I would rely on our dental expertise and our medical professional to make that call.
Could you get back to us with some?
I couldn't ask him.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilperson Taylor.
Um, to me, just from listening to what you're saying, a lot of it sounds like it's a lack of dental care. Not the fluoride. They're having the dental care that is accessible to people.
Well, you can argue that that's one of the problems if people have dental access. So if they don't have access to dental care, which they have a problem in this county, then we should do the prevention upstream event. So we don't have to have, if they can't get access to it, you can prevent dental caries at first place. That's why we're trying to do the prevention of water fluoridation. See, it works backwards upstream to a prevention. If you can't get that, you have 21% of the kids in the county or in the county you can extrapolate down to the city, have dental caries or earlier dental problems. And you could say that if you did fluoridation, it stops some of this.
What would create the, the lack of ability to get dental care?
Uh, my, my versus one, uh, my girl, um, you know, when you're on Medicaid, it's difficult to get appointments. And if you're, it's a small service, there's already those. Um, unless you're on private insurance, it's really difficult to get the.
Right. I, yeah, I noticed that my, my children were on Medicaid.
It has, I think.
Trying to get it just to seem as.
Anybody else?
But, um, just from speaking from, you know, experience, a mother's experience, I have four kids. Um, and one of my children is unfortunately like me and, and had cavities. And the others just didn't. And we've always had fluoridated, you know, water. Um, as I was raising my family, the water was always fluoridated. My concern is, is there a possibility that fluoride might be causing some other problems? And is there another way for people to get their fluoride if they so choose to have, you know, to have fluoride? Where they can drop it, you know, in their, in their water and, and, and then you're not exposing people to something that might be a problem for some, but not for everyone. And there is some controversy, you know, with fluoride causing some, you know, developmental issues. Um, so that's just my concern. And I know that they're, you know, they're polar opposites. You know, you'll get the Bobby Kennedy, you know, person who's really concerned about all of the rise in, you know, children's illnesses and diseases and everything they're getting exposed to, um, along with, you know, public health that feels like fluoride is really doing a good thing. I think the fluoride is, you know, I would love to see the fluoride be available to someone who wishes to fluoride, but not necessarily, you know, everyone has to have it. Cause if it is causing a problem, then, um, that's tragic, you know? And there are, the child's disease, diseases and issues have, are just skyrocketed in the last four years. Um, unbelievably, if you've been listening to Bobby.
Or should there's question.
Anybody else have any questions for Mike?
Expert, thank you very much.
So now we're opening that for some of the town on.
No, no, the mayor's report.
I don't really have mayor's report right now, but I will tell you two things. Um, I didn't have access to dental care when I was a kid. Um, my mom took us in once every, like so many years to Allen and she faked out that we're involved. And it was the same issue way back then. There wasn't anybody would take her type of medical spot, her, her dental. So I'm glad that I did have fluoride, so I have some teeth left. So, um, I did figure out these toothbrushes eventually. So, uh, oh, all right. So fall's coming and this has nothing to do with anything, but if you, um, are outside, you see a bunch of leaves on the drain and at your street, would you please know that the street sweeper is trying really hard to go around and get all those leaves off the drain so we don't have flooding when our horrific rains return? So if you see that, would you please just like pick them up or push them around in the street, but take them out of the drains and that probably keep that drain from flooding and rain is coming. First rains are really going to be the hardest one, I think. Okay, uh, now we'll go with council reports. Councilperson. Mr. Mayor. Um, so last Monday, uh, the ad hoc committee on railroad crossing noise reduction. I'm sure if I got to tell you, right? It's something like that. Trying to reduce the amount of rail related noise, um, from the horns blowing. We met, um, the city staff, Nick Bird in particular, a city engineer is working to get a grant, um, completed within the next, like 10 days. It's got to be submitted by, I think, the 27th or 23rd. Yeah, 23rd of this month. Um, otherwise I guess we have to wait for another grant opportunity to get some funds to really just study the more. It's not really going to solve it. And it's really going to be a, a long-term study and analysis period, try and get anything done and do anything, especially if it's the city's responsibility to cure it. Uh, we are going to have another meeting at the Aberdeen Timberland Public Library on Monday, October 7th at 5:30 PM, correct?
Five.
Five o'clock? Sorry, 5:00 PM. Um, so, uh, you know, uh, we've got, I, I think in a simple, the, uh, uh, upper floor conference room. Um, but I think we have enough members of the committee. But I guess if you want to show up and listen and provide any feedback, I'm sure you'd be welcome. But, uh, again, this is not a problem or an issue that's going to get solved anytime in the future. It's just trying to figure out what we can do, what our options are. Thank you. Any other reports? Councilperson Gaken.
I have a report from ours, but it's more of a question.
Okay.
Um, we've spent the last three meetings discussing the bridge coming with the. Which, uh, in this case, we, we wanted to bring out a RFP for it and, uh, we made the, where this case is, where, where do we stand? What do you, what do you want us to do at this point? And, and do we continue with the RFP? So, because we've put a lot of discussion on what we wanted the RFP to be. The rest proposals for the bridge. And we've put a lot of, a lot of thought and depth into it. Unless you have something else to add. And we just want to go on.
Uh, well, you know, I love the idea of changing that sign on, on the cover weight. Um, I really don't like, I mean, I love the idea that Tim came up with the idea to put something on there after a while and then, but I don't like his, um, selection of colors.
No, we, we want to put our proposal out to the public for people direct who put in ideas for it.
Yeah, and I think we should still do that. I thought we had something like that out right now already.
No, but there was some miscommunication because we, we've kind of prepared and we had a deadline of 45 days to do it. Um, and the communication that you was something that didn't, it came back that you were going to do it yourself.
No, I kind of have a direction I wanted to go in. I'm trying to keep it myself, but I'd like it to be blue and I'd like it to be.
Would you remember the next meeting?
So I would like to go to those meetings, but they're Tuesdays and I, unfortunately.
Or maybe you and I, you and I can get together and bounce off things coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, I love that. I stand, uh, right at the bottom of this list, but I think I concluded that sign today on an email. So, yeah, we can talk about it anytime you want. Okay. Any other directors? Or com? Councilors' reports? No. Okay. So then we'll go to staff reports with the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to just touch base with all of you. Last week, we had the city council budget workshop. Um, and we were able to shave off about seven percent or more of the council's budget. It was to review the council's budget, the legislative, which is called the legislative budget. Um, we also went through, um, survey results and we compiled all of the information. We also went through, um, performance metrics from the director for each department. Um, so I just wanted to check in with all of you to see because the meeting on the 18th was a as needed meeting. And I wanted to check in with you to see if you wanted to still have that meeting. If not, no worries. We can cancel it. And then once, uh, we finalize the budget, um, it will be, it will become your budget to appeal. So would you like to keep it or would you like to cancel?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you. I'm pleased to announce that the, um, um, I'll just move on from that. Washington State Transportation Commission is coming to Aberdeen. Um, and if you don't know, you have my report in front of you. You should have that in front of you. I'll just go over the highlights. Um, last year I was contacted by the Washington Transportation Commission to host their quarterly commission meeting at city hall with the, with the elevator down. It will now be hosted here in this room. Um, uh, so, uh, they review, they're, they're a member, like a. Um, uh, so, uh, they review, they're, they're a member, like a seven-member body of citizens appointed by the governor. Um, then, and they're also included on their panel is the Washington DOT secretary. So they review and assess how the entire transportation system works. Uh, so it's very important for Grace Harbor to have that opportunity in front of them. We, I am working closely with their staff to create the agenda for this, for this. So Aberdeen staff will be, um, very involved in throughout the agenda as well. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give you that they do have like a public comment period. Um, so I will have more information, this will be held in November, so as we get closer to the date. Um, it will be a two-day event and, um, most of them will be staying here in Aberdeen as well. So, um, I will have more information with, for you as we get closer. But this is a, a pretty big deal for Aberdeen to host, um, this commission and their meeting. So, um, there will be, the board will be present, the, um, council look government, a lot of, um, transportation-related uh, projects will be presented to them. So this is a big, um, degree to have in front of you. There may even be an opportunity, I'll have to double check council member, um, Cedar, or there may be an opportunity to talk about railroad um, issues that we're having as well, but I, I, I have to double check on that.
Thank you.
Um, if you're not aware, Grace Harbor County did hire a county administrator. His name is Sam Kim. Uh, Mayor Orr and I were able to sit and talk with him and meet with him and talk about, um, issues and, um, issues that we have here in Aberdeen, but also to also talk about the opportunities and future partnerships that we might have um, with them as well. And last week, Mayor Orr and I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Cantwell. She visited Aberdeen, um, and they hosted her here at, um, uh, Grace Harbor College. And we were able to talk about, uh, opportunities that will be coming to Aberdeen and the need for more jobs. Um, as far as, and, and training for people. If you're not aware, for capita, Aberdeen has the largest number, Grace Harbor actually has the largest number of people between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-five who does not, who do not work, but are employable. So, um, Greater Grace Harbor is taking the lead on that. Um, and trying to figure out ways to encourage people to enter back into the workforce. So, are there any questions with my report? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Um, any of the directors have reports? No, it's shaking all the way down the way, okay? All right, thank you. Um, now we'll go to, uh, public safety with Chairperson Hodgkins.
Um, yes, we've got a request from public safety recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-five agreement for emergency medical services between the city of Aberdeen and Grace Harbor Fire District Kim. And I move that we accept this request.
It's a moot, it's second, it's a necessary discussion. Team, not all in favor? Opposed?
Um, next, uh, we have a request from public safety recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign an inter lawful agreement between the city of Aberdeen and the Quinones Indian Nation for the provision of fire marshal services, which they will be paying for. And I move that we accept this request.
Second.
And second, is there any discussion? Team, not all in favor? Opposed?
And I have another request from public safety recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four E M S agreement between the city of Aberdeen and the city of Cosmopolis. And I move that we accept this request.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? And opposed?
And last, I request, um, from the public safety recommending that the city council authorize the surplus of vehicle number one-five-oh. It's a twenty-oh-two Ford ambulance, well-used, worn out. And the proceeds for the sale will be deposited in the E M S Equipment Rentsworth Reserve Fund. And I move that we accept this request.
Any discussion? Little question, yes. Uh, is for Director Zangier, just be here?
No, the victim.
Yeah, you can answer this, you know, is this, are we really looking at scrap value or something like this?
This is the ambulance.
This is ambulance.
Ambulance, right. But they're, they're, they're gonna put it out for surplus. And they said it's well-worn and everything, I mean, are we talking, who's gonna buy something like this? Is it gonna be bought as, as scrap?
There, there are people, okay, you'll be surprised, somebody will buy it. Uh, and we won't get a lot for it, my gut feeling, not to put a price on it, but hopefully get thirty-five hundred dollars for it. So, it's a little something and the money will go back into the E M S, uh, replacement fund for future ambulances.
Thank you.
Councilmember Teter, I bought one month and it was the most comfortably, comfortable drive ever. They designed that seats for, you know, hard users.
I don't know, I like the ride when I come way through. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Now we'll go to the public works with Chairperson Horace.
Thank you, mayor. First thing on our, uh, agenda here is a public hearing for removal of fluoride. And I move the way open in public hearing.
Thank you. With the second, is any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, public, so the hearing is now open.
I already said I'm Dr. Bill Ossington, so you know that. Thank you for having me come, or letting me speak. I live in Issaquah, Washington. For the first twenty-five years as a dentist and masters in public health, I promoted the addition of fluoride to water. And I changed my mind on it. I sent a little movie to you guys so that you could look at it. I would hope that all of you look at it. Um, to your point, um, but first, fluoridation is a waste of money. If, if you stop fluoridation, which you must, and you will in time if you don't do it soon, because it's causing serious harm and it's not effective. Um, there are other sources of fluoride. That bottle of water right there, sitting there. The F D A says on the toothpaste label, do not swallow. Pretty simple, straightforward. They're referring to a quarter milligram of fluoride. That's the same amount of fluoride that's in that bottle of water if you fill it up to where the label is, about eleven ounce. Do not swallow. I've gone through the F D A and E P A, the, uh, Department of Health in Washington State, Board of Health in Washington State, and they all put it on you guys. You are the doctors for the community. You make the decision. It's your scientific expertise as, as, as dentists, as physicians, as toxicologists, as epidemiologists, all of these experts, you need to read the science and make that decision. Now, for twenty-five years, as a dentist, I never read the science. Goodness, thanks, that one. But when you start realizing that what I did and promoting fluoridation caused serious harm to people, serious harm, I'll go through that very briefly. It just aches me to think about what I did at night when I go to sleep. But I remember that twenty-five years I was promoting this drug that you guys are prescribing to everybody with your drug license. For example, I learned that there's not only cosmetic damage that happens to teeth. And you know, we're putting black drawings of mercury in the back teeth. A little bit white spots, not specified, just no big deal. But people don't like that, the patients don't like it. We dentists, it was just cosmetic. But you know, if I came with a key and scratched my name on your car, it's not damage, it's just cosmetics, right? But it is damage. And that's what you're doing to the people in the community. Two out of three people show this biomarker, you know, places, you also have four seconds left. Um, there are lots of other things, especially to the brain, the thyroid, obesity, goes on and on. Any questions?
I would like to know a lot more. So I will be watching that video that you sent, I haven't seen it yet, but I have heard there are major problems with it.
Yeah, your, your question previous is, where are other sources of fluoride? That bottle of water there, the FDA says, don't swallow a quarter milligram fluoride. That's in toothpaste. If you wanna have it, disobey the FDA and just take a tiny little bit and swallow. Just don't rinse your mouth out as well as you should, okay? Because every time we brush our teeth with fluoridated toothpaste, which has benefit scientifically, but when you swallow it, there's no scientific evidence of quality enough to pass the FDA's muster. There are no randomized controlled trials, oh, there is one, and it didn't find benefit. There's another one that's being tried now, but we got it from there. Mechanically deboned meat, the grinding of the bones, that has it. It's on and on and on, many, many medications on.
Another question?
Yeah. So what exactly was it that made you do more research to come to this conclusion?
Two things, one, a patient of mine said, Bill, what do you think of fluoridation? I said, I know it's good, I can see it in my patients, I know it's good. And then he said, what do you think of freedom? My mouth went open. I believe in freedom, but fluoridation is not freedom, it's mass medication without my consent. Second thing, I was walking down the hall of my office and I saw this big basket of pressed toothpaste. And I thought, I know we have problems in dentistry here. I mean, the, the dental associations, they specifically say that they have no duty to protect the public health. They're there to protect dentists and themselves. So don't look at the dental associations or Evans Asociates. And I saw that toothpaste, I picked it up and I read the label, like, they're really concerned, this is a new label. I, I gotta, I gotta find out how much is in there. And it was a quarter milligram. I mean, that's what we're doing for each glass of water. And some people drink ten glasses of water. I mean, this is an uncontrolled controlled dosage. Those guys are controlling the, 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 sorry, those guys are controlling the concentration. But not everybody eats, drinks the same amount of water. And so you end up with some people drinking none. In fact, half the people don't even drink the water, the, the fluoridated, they, you go to the stores and they're just like, thousands of bottles of, bottles of water that doesn't have fluoride.
Okay, um. Did you answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it was like going into.
Yeah, 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 thank you, mayor. Any other questions? Thank you.
Come all the way from Issaquah to talk to us?
Actually, I came yesterday.
Oh.
Because I'm so accustomed to Tuesday meetings. But I told my wife, it's Tuesday, we'll go, go to the beach, have a good time. We had a good time, had a good meal, and then I came here and no one was here. I called the mayor's office and he called me, said, it's tomorrow. So my wife said, forget you, I'm not driving with you, you go by yourself. But no, I'm not selling anything, I'm not making any money off of it. I'm trying to help. It's guilt that brought me, guilt for having harmed so many people.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone can speak, right?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I have no medical credentials. My name is Jared Ragic, I'm from Ward Two. I do work at the Public Health Department. Um, some of this, uh, things that were said here, I have never seen that in any studies, uh, that there is significant damage and harm caused by, uh, a, an appropriate concentration of fluoride in the water. Um, we've had presentations done by Department of Health for fluoride in the water, local dentists, fluoride in the water, our medical director, uh, for our region for fluoride in the water. And primarily it is grossly beneficial. Now, there were some questions, uh, when, after my dentist presentation. And there's nothing that's, like, when we're talking about access to dental care, we don't have enough dentists here to serve the seventy-plus thousand people we have in Grace Harbor. We have like twenty-five or twenty-seven dentists that are actually licensed to work in Grace Harbor County to serve seventy-seven thousand people. I was one of those poor kids who grew up, who didn't have, I grew up in Jersey, we had a well, did not have fluoride. And I had cavities like crazy and, and have the parental support to really make sure that we had really quality dental care. Uh, that's an issue for a lot of kids around here in Grace Harbor County specifically, and I think in Aberdeen the same. I think taking fluoride out of the water is gonna have, uh, grossly negative effects. I think we're gonna see, uh, more cavities, which is gonna lead to more dentable K, which is going to lead to, uh, significant image issues. Cause people who have rotting teeth tend to, uh, not earn as much money, they don't do as well, they can't get jobs easily, things like that. So I think that's another perspective to consider. Um, yeah, I, I, again, I, I haven't seen any of the science, maybe I need to research it more. But when the C D C, when D O H, when all of these other entities that are scientific-based, the, uh, physicians, American Medical Association, the Association, Association of Dentists, things like this for our country are, are for this. I tend to go with what they say. Um, again, maybe I'll have to do some of my own reading and perusing some more in-depth on some of these harms that are uh, the potential here, I just have not personally seen it myself, so just my few cents, thank you. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Yeah.
Yeah. Um, last spoken word for it. When I was a kid, we didn't have fluoride. And I had cavities bad. And I remember we moved to a place that had fluoride and I stopped down to get my teeth drilled on. And that was a great thing. Earlier this week, I sat in the dentist's office for a while. And I'm here to tell you, it's expensive, it is really expensive. And I heard this council make a vote that, that we can't raise the cost of E M S because we've got such a poverty problem. We got a lot of kids in our community that are gonna wind up with a lot of cavities. And you think, you think you're saving up money by not increasing the E M S bill, you're gonna raise their costs. And, and you're gonna put a lot of kids in the dentist chair that, that might be able to avoid that by doing something that, I don't know, I, I'm seventy-one years old and I've only been drinking fluoride for sixty-five years. And that's probably the reason that I am the way I am today, is all that fluoride. But I personally have never met anyone who had negative effects from fluoride. And I don't know if any of you have either. I know that there's anecdotal stuff, somebody's probably been hit by a meteorite. But, but really has, you know, the big cost benefit and the risk versus the benefit. Fluoride, I, you know, you're doing a good thing for low-income kids. And if you're seriously trying to help the low-income people in this community, you know, go ahead, keep that fluoride. Thank you.
All right. So, no more, just, are you coming up to talk, Alan?
Oh, my life.
Okay.
I'll make it short. When I was a kid, grew up in the sixties and seventies down in, on the art coast, sort of the gear art. And gear art, fluoridated their water, Seaside didn't. My dentist, Dr. Knitt, was at Seaside, you could look at your teeth and seconds tell you where you lived. Uh, cause our teeth were better than those at Seaside. So it's, I implore everybody in the council, it's laborious and it's not, maybe it's not the best reading, but do your medical scientific research based on scientific principle. And don't, and don't just kind of aim towards somebody like a Dr. Merkler or something who would, it sounds good, but it may not be, uh, may not be scientifically valid. And you, you go to Mayo Clinic and start with the American Dental Association, even Wikipedia. But Wikipedia is the quick and dirty, the really good stuff is at the bottom of the page where the sources are, that's what you gotta read. So, this is important enough to spend that time, to, to spend that effort, that's it.
Thank you.
I have to say something to everyone.
It's a, it's a public hearing.
You could do it in the good of the.
Yeah, during the good of the order.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it's a hearing, we're just hearing.
He was able to ask questions.
It's a public hearing, I think it really isn't meant to be in your.
I've been, yeah, not wanting anyone to talk, really.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor. Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
One report, unfortunately, Public Works recommending that the city council authorize a surplus of thirteen cases of equipment listed on report through GovNews, and the proceeds be deposited into the corresponding ERR fund for the selling department. I move that we adopt this report.
Second. Any discussion? Call in favor. Opposed? Right, fast.
And the next one, request from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the Public Works director to execute the road aid proposal as presented, I move to read, adopt this request.
Second. Is there any discussion? Counselperson, see it on top. So, a question, and again, with the Rick Sangers down here, maybe McBird knows. Uh, so the cost of this software program is like ten thousand dollars or so? Right, what, what would, if we weren't using that, you know, shift to that, and we instead continue to rely on staff time to do it by hand, or however we're doing it, and have been doing it, what kind of cost are we talking about for staff? Are we saving money by doing it this way, or are we spending the same amount of money through time? Or is it cheaper to just continue to have staff do it? Because we had a three million dollar deficit or more that we gotta deal with right now, do we really need to spend the money on this, is it gonna save us money?
Well, um, I think the best way to answer that is, is that over the last, I'd say decade or so, we've evaluated maybe eighty street segments, and maybe, and that's probably a high number, it's probably even closer to fifty. We've done a number of those, those trials over the years to kind of correct the deficiencies through there. What is a staff shortage that is limiting what, what we're capable of, of producing and evaluating? And so, part of the, the challenge is, is that when we talk about a road segment, I'm talking about, you know, about three hundred foot segment that we're knocking out, that is part of the evaluation, somebody's complained about. What I think anybody will be able to tell you is that when you drive around, I mean, there's more than just eighty problems that we have as a, as a part of our roadway system. And so, part of the objective is, is to establish a, a baseline system throughout the entire roadway network that, uh, creates this snapshot in time for us. So, when you look at the holistic framework, what it is that we're trying to accomplish, wouldn't we spend a dollar? We want to make sure that we maximize that, that dollar. If, if we're concerned about the financial, uh, needs of the city, we want to make sure that that dollar is being used to the absolute best that we can. And that's the purpose of this, this tool, is so that we can look at where the hotspots are at. Yes, we know there's a number of spots, but, but if we're able to isolate areas and maximize the dollar spent, that's the real driver behind it.
So, so I appreciate you answering the question about segment, because I was gonna ask you about that. So the segment is about one city block, three hundred feet or so. How many of those do you intend to do on an average annual basis? And under this, are you gonna do everything in the city in one year? Have everything?
With this offer, we would do everything on an annual basis, yes. What we have done in the last couple of years is maybe five or ten blocks. So, we haven't been able to do a whole equivalent in the last few years. And so that's, one of the challenges, is we need, we needed to find an economical way of, of being able to run cheap with this out.
I mean, it just surprises me, you can't, um, get an intern or a college student or something to get in a pickup truck or a car and go drive around the city, you could drive this entire city pretty quickly, it seems to me. But, you know, so I mean, we're gonna have a city staff member have to put this software into some kind of vehicle and drive around, right? And so they're gonna have to cover the whole city, and they'll map it, so, but then we don't have to do it every year after that, or?
Well, so what you just described is the perfect scenario, where we utilize an intern to drive around the city, and it faces the videos, and it conducts the evaluations of the street segments. The traditional method is, is that an engineering team member goes out there onsite, walks the block, evaluates whether or not, you know, that you've got transverse cracking, longitudinal cracking, alligator cracking, the types of cracking, the types of separations, the widths and depths of the separations, and there's a lot of manual effort that goes into creating that rating system, so that that way it can be quantitatively differentiated when you look at the infrastructure network. And this system utilizing the software, it does that for you automatically, and so now, rather than taking an engineering team and having them, you know, walk the city streets, now we're able to put an intern behind the wheel and utilize the software.
Thank you.
I would just like to find out that that information was in the report that we were given.
I know, but I'm still skeptical, so.
And, um, the software is used in a number of cities, and it really represents an advance that will be cost savings. And it will help populate our map system and just give them a really valuable tool. So I'd like to call a question. Or, yeah, call for, as the votes.
Second. Second person, second, any discussion? Call in favor.
I have.
And I mean, opposed? Second.
All right, and we got a third reading and final passage of Bill, oh, this, one, the resolution setting the date for second public hearing under consideration for moving fluoride from this city water. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Is there any discussion? Call in favor. I can't get the, oh, but, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pat.
As far as discussion is this, I'd like to remind people that you're like, you're. During the nineteen sixties, I would like to remind everyone, if there was another factor involved that is not present today, natural sugars, which was rampant in all, and all kids were fed it, and then from every direction back in the city. So, of course, there's candy happens, but today, you can't find refined sugar in anything. So I'd like everyone to remind them that, when they're carrying oranges to apples and have those oranges, remind themselves that there's no more cane sugar for yourselves, try with me.
Can, can I make up a follow-up question right now, or should I just wait for, for the gun to be ordered? Wait. Our discussions.
Yeah.
So, our discussion, babe, I just would like to hear more from, um, Dr. Bill, O- um, Ossenson? Did he?
He said he had a long drive.
He does have a long drive, um, do we have his contact information? I, we heard, we, you know, we've had presentations from public health, I would just like to hear more from him of what he has to say before we vote on it.
I have one as well.
He emailed you all, I forwarded the email.
It would be nice, I'd just like to have him do it recently. Yeah, I'm forward, that we can have, yeah, that Kennedy should engage.
Is there a date that's been set for this second public hearing, opposed?
It's our next council meeting.
Next council meeting? Call in favor. Opposed? No.
No.
Three hours roll over. Over.
So this is the vote for the, to have a public hearing? On a roll call vote?
Mm-hmm.
Ellis?
Um, yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Hodgkin?
No, I'd like to learn more.
Unless, except.
Well, the no is to not hold a public hearing, we need, we have to hear a lot more about here. Do you have more info?
Yeah, I'm gonna get more info. We will, okay, so, yes, I want more info. Yeah.
Don't confuse you guys.
Florence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchini?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Cedar?
No.
Swar?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
That passes ten to zero, this will be a resolution, twenty twenty-four dash one six. Uh, can I? Ten to one, yeah, so, what I say, ten to zero?
There is more than.
Ten to one, sorry, ten to one.
See what your role called then?
Ten to one, this will be resolution twenty twenty-four dash one six.
So, okay. Third reading and final passage of Bill twenty-four dash zero five, in order to submitting the official building map of City Avenue, I move that we adopt this.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call in favor.
This is a roll call vote, Ellis?
Yeah.
Gaken?
Yes.
Hodgkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchini?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Bor?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
That passes eleven to zero, this will be ordinance six seven one two.
That's it for Public Works. Thank you, Senator.
We have our requests recommending that the city council authorize the deaccession of the listed items from the museum collection, I move that we adopt the surplus.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor. I, opposed? Passes.
Next, we have a request recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Harvard Architects LLC to provide construction cost estimates in architecture and engineering for one eighteen West Woodcroft Street, I move we adopt the surplus.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call in favor. I, opposed? Passed it.
We have a request recommending that the city council adopt the creation of student council representative, will we adopt this request?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I don't think it's a same capacity, but I'm.
I said you stand, I think it's a great item.
I didn't see what happened.
Yeah, me too. Okay, um, any more discussion? Call in favor.
Okay.
I, I'm for it, but would they be like a city member of the council, or, like, would they come to the meeting, or would it just be signed up?
They, they would be, yes, they would, they would have a seat, but they, but they, they wouldn't have a vote, obviously, but they would present, um, a student, a young person's perspective to the council, they would be.
Sorts.
They would give you updates on what's happening, um, with, the, with students around the city, they would be the representative for young people, so, that's the idea of it. And, and people will be applying for the position, who, I, uh, yeah, paint charge director Danny Smith will be working with Lavery, who read the school. I'll be meeting next week with the co-superintendents to discuss this further as well, but, um, yeah, we will be working with the school district to see what this would look like with them.
More discussion? Okay, all in favor? I, opposed? Passed it.
And last, we have a resolution authorizing a hiring freeze until the financial position of the city has improved, I will adjourn this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Call in favor. I, opposed?
No.
One no.
This will be a resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven.
Okay, and is there any looking at the order? I give up, I yield. And then, um, I will entertain a bunch.
I move that we adjourn the meetings.
Second. Thank you, that meeting's scattered. Thank you, folks, for coming, we appreciate you taking your time out of your days, got to be. But, um, I can, I can, I can.